Everybody being here with us tonight. Some faces I haven't seen in a while. We'd like to excuse Councilman Barrett and Councilman Allen tonight. They'll not be with us, but we do have a quorum so we can move forward. I'll go ahead and begin with the prayer. And then Chief, would you lead us in place of allegiance?
Yes, ma'am.
Our dear Father, we come before you this night. We're grateful for the many blessings that God has given us, for the opportunity we have to meet as a council and citizens to discuss the needs of our city, and grateful for all the blessings that we enjoy here. We ask the blessing upon those that serve our city, both our first responders and those that work as staff and that provide the services for us and our residents. We ask that we bless them in their endeavors. And, Father, we're grateful for all that we have. We ask again wisdom this night. We might make good choices and good decisions in behalf of those that we serve. We appreciate thee and this we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the minutes from twelve thirty twenty-four. Any amendments or corrections to those?
Mayor, I gave a few amendments to Sierra earlier today, and those have been corrected, and we have them. So I believe we approved the amended minutes that we have in front of us.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Goodrich, Sean in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We do have our public comment period at the beginning of each meeting. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to take up to three minutes to address the council, now would be the time to do so. And if you do take that opportunity, if you come to the mic and state your name for the record. Are there any here tonight that would like to take that opportunity? Seeing none, we'll move forward with our first item of business. We have the 2025 Roswell City Public Meeting calendars, Sierra. Has everyone gotten a chance to look over that? Serious conflicts.
We made a copy for each of you up there. It was awesome.
Right. Let's keep going, please. There's no questions, conflicts. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman White.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Busenbark, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is unanimous. XCL Resources. Scott, go ahead and come forward. And Sean, we gotta get you in the hot seat somehow.
That's okay, Mayor, thank you.
So I was gonna say, this is probably the fifth or sixth time that we've been here on this subject. And so, because it's been so many times, and we haven't come to an conclusion, I brought Sean as my backup. So last time we met, we were seeking approval for the pipeline that led... So let me back up a little bit. Previously, we had a surface use agreement signed and approved by the council. And that included us committing to give you a route for our pipeline. The original route we proposed was we were asked to move it further away from the sewer lagoons, just for any future expansion on the sewer lagoons. And then the second time we came in, the route we proposed went through, I believe, the Cowboy Action Gun Range. And so we were asked to go back to the drawing board and propose a different route. And this is the new route that we proposed, which avoids both the Cowboy Action Gun Range and the 200-yard gun range.
So, Scott, if I remember correctly, the original design was along that property mine on the west.
Correct.
Then we had agreed in this, and what I remember is what the council approved, is just to follow the road. So to move over to the east, stay on the right of way to the road going south of the fields. And that's what the council actually did approve.
Do you mind if I go there and point?
Yeah, sure.
So, yes, we moved it coming across this way and then coming up through here. And then we were asked to move it along the road.
Correct.
But the problem with coming across here is there is a future play pigeon range up here that we were asked to avoid. And so we met out there with Brian, and Kirby and I had had conversations. Brian and Kirby asked us to come across here and then, you know, rather than make this loop in it, but come across here, get to the road, and then go through here, but not make this loop, and then try to follow things. And this kind of does match a new road that's out there that matches up with the gun ranges.
Yeah, and I was only pointing out that I think it was approved just on the road, and that's what the council thought. And then we saw another map that it did go through the Cowboy Action Shooting Range. And that's where we're like, wait, we can't have it right through the middle of the range. I've looked at this. I think it addresses the concerns that I personally had with impacting the gun range and what we're trying to do out there. The only thing that I would like to make sure, and we do have our engineers here tonight, is that that pipeline, we make sure that the pipeline wouldn't be close to the berms or any, you know, actual construction that we would do out there so that if there's any problems with the line, they wouldn't have to, you know, tear into, you know, to me this June. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and have you been involved, Jeff, at all with, or Eric, with making sure where XCL wants to be is going to be out of the way of where we're gonna actually construct?
I have it. I don't know if Eric has. But I do see, we must be giving you shape files or you know somewhere.
Yes, that's right. We reached out to find these shape files so we can make sure we avoided everything.
Eric in Outlaw's been talking, so.
True.
So I mean, just looking at it, it looks like it's been addressed. There's, you know, the only real places there behind the 200-yard range, but I would think that you could pile some spoils on top of your pipe or whatever, and it could be hidden too, just because I'm talking.
Yeah. In my mind, if there are any repairs, so say there was a repair on the east side of the 200-yard gun range, the gun range is gonna be shut down, but we're making repairs anyway. And then any burbs or anything that was disrupted, we, our construction crews will put those back the way we found them, so.
Looks like you should avoid everything, though, because I think it's definitely able to get around that 200-yard range on the old road. Yeah, I think so.
The pipe, just so everyone is clear on the pipe that we're putting in, we're putting a flex steel pipe that is coated both internally and externally from probably coming. And so the lifespan of this pipe is, I mean, everything that I've put in so far in the last seven years, we don't have to go back and make any repairs.
That was one of the questions I had too, because I mentioned, you know, what's the pressure on that?
It's rated for 2250 pounds, but we are gonna be governed by the state to probably only get up to about 1,500 pounds.
Gotcha. I just remember in, well, it's linked to now, but the sprinkler system that they had out there. But no, a flex steel is a totally different animal. I, you know, as long as it's out of the... That was my biggest concern when we saw the very last map with it going through the Cowboy Action is that it can impact what we've already... We're in the middle of a federal grant. We've already submitted all the paperwork for that. And so it can impact any of that. But I don't see, as long as it's out of the way of our construction, what we're doing, it makes no difference to me. Any questions from the council on that?
Kirby, you've worked with this, and you feel pretty comfortable with this?
Yeah, yeah, me and Brian and the staff do. We feel comfortable.
Just as a reminder, in the original surface use agreement that was signed, there was an $8 perliter foot fee for any construction we do along the pipeline. That will reflect the footage that is reflected on this map. So whatever was on the original plot will now be changed to the footage on this plot. And it looks, let's see if we can find it on here. There is about, it looks like there's just quick math. And Busenbark taught me math, so. There are roughly 6,000 feet there that we would pay 800 perliter foot to, to live this pipeline.
Well, that addressed the concerns that I had on the last one. No other questions, do we have a?
Yeah, would we approve this, the new plan, and going forward with XCL?
So because of the changes we made on this before we moved, finalized the approval here, because of the changes we made, all of these parcels and lot numbers and everything needed to be updated on the original surface use agreement. So the surface use agreement, the language in the surface agreement has not changed, but the description of the land has changed.
I would just approve the exhibit, and then when you're ready for, when we sign the contract and it's all done.
I have it already here.
And it's all changed, and, oh, you already have the change?
It's all legal with you guys tonight. It just needs your signature. You guys can just make sure it matches up with the one you signed previously, because it will honor then the description of the land.
What I would do is just approve it contingent on legal counsel review, and then we can review that as an admin and make sure that everything is kosher.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman White, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll give you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thanks. Excellent. Jones and Mill proposal, Kirby Whippleger, where we have Jeff there as well.
Yes.
Who wants to add?
I don't know which one you had first, streets. So I think there were three things, am I right?
Yep.
Two of them essentially go together. So we came, I came with Kirby, and this has been a few months ago. You probably remember when, Kirby. But we brought essentially a map of proposed street improvements that Kirby wanted to do, streets and utility reconstruction, so transit line replacement, super replacement, and then redoing the surfacing of the road. That would be Bonnie Drive area 1,000 west and then 100 south and a small section of the 200.
Did you say 1,000 west?
Yeah, 1,000 west and Bonnie Drive, that kind of like loop area right there.
I think Super JR at the...
North of 200 north.
Yeah, and the secondary's already been put in. Road is already in that shape, so it's gonna have all the utilities before it's just...
Yeah, it's on the north side. I was thinking right there on the south side, there's a stretch that we want to put sidewalk or asphalt for our trail.
Oh, yeah.
About this time, sorry.
All right.
We're all on board if we can find funds for it. So we brought cost estimates of that total thing too. And one thing we're just following up on now is these are our proposals from Jones and Mill to do that work. And we are actually under what was shown in those initial cost estimates when we look at combined. So there's two proposals. We just, we're trying to keep them a little bit separate as Kirby has a separate budget item for water line stuff, and we may end up using some of the water funding there. So the street reconstruction would include all the street surfacing, some curtain gutter repair, the super replacement, items like that. XCL breakdown of the fee there in the back for a total of $192,100. And then the transit replacement would go along so that stuff's happening on the same streets. And we're able to utilize, you know, be more efficient using survey. We just have to survey once and everything. The total on that one is the 67,500.
Can you go up to the Roswell's fee? That's just engineering. All of that's just engineering, correct?
Engineering, construction, observation, contract management, survey, material testing.
Right, but it doesn't include any construction or installation of pipe?
No, the total project overall is like 2.5, 2.?
Yeah, 2. actually, it was 2.3.
Okay.
Is it something, is this something that we're?
It's in the budget already.
Right, oh, we have it. We don't have to go find the money. It's already in the budget.
Okay.
Yep.
Is this Scott's?
I double check. He's got Scott's phone.
So, probably just...
Project as far as the city projects have been approved, already been, the council has approved.
Well, they're in the budget.
Yeah, they're in the budget. And he's just asking for engineering to proceed with the advertising.
So what I would, what I think would be helpful in the future is if we have the project costs, anticipated project costs, so we can see what the relationship is there fees with project costs. The reason is, because obviously, and running the numbers in my head, your engineering fee should not be more than a certain percentage of the overall project cost, and just making sure that those are there.
I think we've already got that. I know we would have had a total cost initially. Like I said, if I've got a PDF, I can go email it out to...
Sure. And I know it's a simple thing, but it would just be nice to have so that we can see what the comparison of overall engineering fees is to the project cost and make sure that they're reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay? And then the next one was the 67?
On the transit, yep.
And two different projects then?
Yeah, we're discussing with Kirby whether we go for one general, one prime contractor with subs, or if we... We're kind of in a weird scenario. I don't know if we're seeing the same things, but we're working... We have kind of some underground contractors, but our bigger contractors don't seem to do underground themselves lately. And so we're trying to figure out how we get a good price and a good product, while not necessarily fitting schedules against each other of contractors. So, I mean, it's yes and no. I don't know, I'm undecided.
Well, I think, and when we approve this, like if we approve this tonight, it just presented a little bit different than what I'm used to. I'm used to seeing the project, and when we approve the project, the engineering fees are included in the project. And so it's a little different to how the engineering fees approved and then the project. We've done it once or twice on some, but I don't know. Do we have the estimates on the project? Or is it just a?
Yeah, and they've come to council. I can find them on the front of your plate.
Okay. Is that?
And it would have had engineering fees.
My thinking here from me.
But the engineering fees were in that. What I...
Did you say this was a little less, whether you were?
Everything was in there, but we didn't compare like, you know, a percentage was engineering fees.
Well, that's what I mean. There should be a breakdown of...
I think the mayor, I think what he's requesting is a breakdown of the whole project. How much is the pipe gonna cost? And asphalt, right?
Normally, we'll have a project bid. The, Sidco's here tonight. You've got a breakdown of the project that we're going to do on State Street. You have the total project, what the engineering fees are going to be, and it's all together. And then we make a decision based on the overall project. That's what I'm saying. It's just hard to tie what engineering fees are to what project and making sure that...
And I think that...
For budgetary numbers or wasn't approved?
Well, budgetary was, because we didn't have... I think we came to council first to make sure council was on board with doing that size of project first, right, Kirby?
Yes.
And they would have an estimated, just the same as like if Troy, you know, Sidco helps you apply for joint highway money or whatever, right? You put in and anticipate it, and maybe those numbers end up being the same. And then you come back, and we actually refine our scope and make sure we're catching things. And a lot of times, we come in under what we anticipate. So like the 2.3 million, I can't find it real fast on my phone, but we would have brought a cost estimate that would have said, hey, here's these roads, we're looking at this many feet of pipe, this much asphalt, this much sidewalk, this much road base cement treatment, all that kind of stuff as a breakdown. And again, this is an opinion of probable cost, right? It's not a full bid or anything. And then we would have estimated and said, okay, this is this size of project. And we would estimate the content engineering would be in this, you know, at this number.
Yeah.
And then, so yes, I think one of the big things is this came, that was probably six months ago. You know what I mean? That that part of it came to the council.
And even if it was just that, and we're just approving this aspect of that overall project would be helpful, I think, for the council and the public for transparency. Am I thinking correctly, or am I way off base?
No, I think you're thinking correctly. I think part of the, why it's somewhat confusing again is there's this time span from when that was brought to council to now, just this, and we didn't bring, accompany these proposals with that overall project cost, which we definitely knew.
Are you needing a motion to go forward so you can get started? Or is it something you could bring back and bring back the numbers like the mayor said, so we can look at it overall?
I mean, I think that's up to you guys. I think obviously we're trying to move along to get things done and get out in appropriate time. But, you know, I obviously would not pressure you to vote on something you didn't feel like you had the full information to look at either. So, I mean, I guess I'd also say I don't think it's like, it's not that big of a deal to come back in two weeks at the next council meeting with that, if that's what you'd like to happen.
Is that, would you be okay with that, Mayor, if we table this?
Yeah, and it's not a huge deal. It's just, it's hard to connect. And for our minutes and for the public and everything else to put, this is actually for this project. Because if they're gonna be one, that's one thing. If they're gonna be two, it's good to see those broken out. And then those engineering fees are tied to that in minutes and in presentation and everything else.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying it's...
Just gives you guys an opportunity to double check things.
Yeah, and then see it in the scope of the whole project versus just engineering fees. I would feel more comfortable with that, but...
Yeah, I don't disagree, Mayor. And I do think it feels disjointed a little bit in terms of where things are. So I think it would be better if we could table this and have you bring back kind of the whole thing. And then you can point out this piece so we can see it.
Yeah. Yeah, I can go back, find what was presented to council before, and then attach that with these attachments.
Yeah, if you can do that, that'd be great. That'd be my recommendation. Do we need a motion, or just, no, we got it?
I think we would, motion, well, let's see, because we've got a couple items. We have the contract, the reconstruction proposal letter, and the transit replacement. So they're just letters that we want to approve, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So can we wait on all those till next time?
I think they're all related, aren't they?
Yes, third one, is that third one the general engineering contract?
There's, that's not on here, but it was mentioned that you wanted to...
The third attachment, is that what it was?
Actually, when I printed it, I didn't see a third attachment. I just got, so...
What was on here, so you showed me this morning, Kirby?
Kirby.
And it's okay.
He just threw it under the bus, Kirby.
Usually backs up, so. It's just one time.
Yeah. Well, we can definitely do that. I can go put that, kind of pull that that was brought together initially for the overall spoke of the project, and then combine it all. Maybe that's sent back in on the agenda for next time.
Okay, I would move that we go within that direction then. I'll make a motion that we table, get that information together, and put it on the agenda for next council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion?
I'll second that.
The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll see that next time. Did you want to talk about the, can we get the general contract? Information on that as well?
Yeah, I think this was the other one I had sent to Josh. So, and some of you, you know, so there's been some overturn on the council. So back in like 2023, the city did a procurement for like a, you know, your civil infrastructure engineer. And we kind of had a, the way the contract is written is it's set up in almost three-year terms. And so we've come up onto that adjustment. Am I saying that right? And so because we are coming and asking essentially the city to sign another quote-unquote contract with us, even though the initial general services agreement has like a, what do you call it? Renewal clause or whatever. Because it requires a signature, I think the discussion between Kirby and Ryan and Josh and I was to bring that to council again just to make sure everybody was on board with that. And I can just make sure that's clear. I'll send it as a separate item for the next council meeting.
Okay, yeah, let's get it on the agenda as well. Get it taken care of.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the State Street pedestrian crossing, project proposal. We have Troy with Sidco and Ryan. I don't know if you jumped in at any time.
Yes, we're gonna get Ryan and Kirby to jump in at any time that they wish. Essentially, what we're here tonight is to give the council an update on the project. We have been working on it with staff here for, I'm gonna say, going on about a year, or a little longer actually, trying to get this project to wherever we can move forward with it. The project was initially proposed as an underpass to follow and go under the road. As we have worked on that, and the best way I can describe it is looking hydraulically at Cotwood Creek and everything there, there is no way for us to get an underpass under there that potentially won't be flooded during several times each summer with this. And so as we have worked together and looked at how to make this work, what we've come up with is to do an at-grade crossing there that will come out of the nature park, follow that trail, come to State Street, and at that point, we'll elevate up and cross at grade. In doing that, what will happen, if we can roll up just a little bit here on you, you can see here with the drawing that we are going to be raising the grade of the road across the area where that pipe is, right through that area, about five feet to help eliminate that blind hill and to get that. Because we're stuck at being able to cut the hill down because of homes, driveways, and other facilities there. And so as we've looked at that, we're going to raise the grade across that area. We're going to widen the road to where we can get the full shoulders on the road, the curved gutter and sidewalk, so that as people come up out of the trail, they can turn and go up State Street, or vice versa. They can come down State Street.
Where does that, we have a sidewalk that goes so far up State Street. Would we connect to that?
We would connect to that with this. This would connect to that sidewalk on both sides of the road.
Perfect.
So that people could access from either the east or west side of State Street onto this trail and go down. Along with that, in order to help facilitate safety, we're also looking at putting an at-grade pedestrian cross in a signal, essentially a cross the road, similar to what's here on 3rd South and US 40, to where the pedestrian can push the button, the lights come on, flash, so that we do eliminate any possibility of not being seen by that, coming across that blind hill. And so that's what we're looking at with what this project has turned into. And over time, for some of the council, you get, for some council members are new over the last few years. This project initially started out, excuse me, at about $1.1 million. And we found out fairly quickly looking at this that that wasn't enough money. And so we went back to the Joint Highway Committee, and that's where these funds were obtained from, and asked for an additional $800,000 roughly to where our total budget on this is $1.688 million that we have in federal funds, which are 93% grant, 7% match. And so if we go to the estimate here, we can show you how each of these pieces are gonna fit into this project. Our roadway cost, which is to raise the grade and widen the shoulders, we're looking at $568,000. The trail construction to tie together from the existing nature park trail up over this trail and across the road, we're at $314,800. The at-grade pedestrian signals are $120,000. As we go down here, we've got to extend the existing culvert because we're widening the slopes on this.
What size of culvert was that again?
It's a seventy-two. Inch culvert, six foot, I'm gonna look.
Yeah, so that.
That's correct. And and what we have with that is that culvert has got a sag in it. That's partway through there, it's got a sag in it, but structurally, we don't see any real problems. But what we are going to do with that culvert is we are going to line that. With a high PSI concrete lining. So that that culvert will last for the duration, just the, the life of it. Here and extend that, and then we'll extend that seventy-two both east and west. To to match our slopes. Uh, they're relining the pipe to be forty-five thousand dollars. Remove head wall, concrete collar, we've got five thousand dollars in there. And then the cost for the sidewalk curve and gutter and the shoulder widening on State Street. Is a hundred and forty thousand eight hundred dollars for the total project cost of one point two five five million. In this, uh, between the design costs and the construction management costs. In this, we've had quite a, I'm gonna say, an interesting situation. With this, and that we've been doing the project, UDOT also brought on a structural engineer. When we were looking at doing these underpasses and we did a lot of work with that, so. The engineering percentages are a little higher than normal because of the situation of this project. Uh, then we have some right away that we will have to acquire. And we have estimated fifty thousand dollars for the road right away. And doing what we're doing, we don't have to relocate that big twenty-inch water line, which we thought we were going to have to with an underpass. And so that becomes zero there. Uh, we have a contingency of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Which is for any unforeseen costs that we've seen in here or inflation cost added to this project. What that does is it brings us to one point nine four four million dollars total. With a budget of one six eight eight, which is showing that we are in a shortfall of two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
And I did quick math, um. So one six eight eight, we still have to match seven percent, so that's an additional.
A hundred and fifteen thousand.
One eighteen, so a hundred, a hundred and eighteen thousand, so we'd be letting that three hundred and. Seven four, no, yeah, seventy-four.
We have to come up with the matching and the extra two fifty-six of the.
Yes.
The budget includes our matching portion.
Still, honestly.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not bad.
A good deal.
A, a really good deal.
With the five-foot increase, is there gonna have some sort of guardrail or anything along there or?
What'll happen with that is that there won't be, because what we'll have there is, we'll have. The shoulder on the road, then we'll have curb gutter, we'll have sidewalk, and then we'll have another additional safety on the outside of that, so. Guardrail won't be required, but we have talked about that possibility of putting that in. If it is, it would come out of that hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in contingency. So we do have a way, if it got built and we still didn't feel comfortable with it. That we would have money to put that guardrail in, but by all the ASG standards, it's not required.
And will the signage be visible from the upper part of State Street?
Yes, what what'll happen with this, uh, with the pedestrian crossing. Is it will be elevated, it would be essentially fourteen feet near. Plus the five feet we're raising the grade, so it'll be up about twenty feet from that original road. Where you'll have line aside to those flashing lights coming up on that hill. Uh, we are also anticipating with that, uh, or not anticipate, but. The possibility is if we weren't uncomfortable with that, is that we would have another set of lights that would be just right on top of the hill. So that we're warning people with what is going on there.
If you're interested, I have the typical of what the road will look like.
It should be right.
It wasn't in the package.
So let's do that, let's take and share this.
Would you introduce yourself with?
Please, Sarah. Sarah is with me here, she's, she's my lead designer on this project.
Yes, I'm Sarah Nadelkobu.
Nice. Well, thanks for being here with us tonight.
So Sarah's with us, and so what we have, my projects are not being in your packet. But what we have is a twelve-foot traffic lane.
That wasn't our packet?
A five-foot shoulder. And then curb gutter sidewalk, and then we have a fence. We hadn't had one guardrail, we were just putting a fence to keep people from going off. Not necessarily by our, and then four foot behind that fence, for stability there.
And was fence in the budget?
Yes, fencing is in the budget, fencing is in, in the number with the curb gutter sidewalk.
So it would be a. So it would be a total net out of profit for us, approximately three seventy-five. Um, so that's, do we have that budgeted?
Yes, we've been part of that budgeted, but I don't, don't believe it includes the additional.
I, I don't believe it does either, yes.
So we might have to, at least give us a little time for the review.
Eighteen thousand is probably a good one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right. So.
Um, can you explain to me the fees again on, on the engineering fees?
Yes, what we.
So there's the.
Let's, let's go back to the estimate. Yeah, what we've got on the, the PE is that included the cost for CivCo and for. Oh, what did I just drop? I'm getting a little senile here, excuse me, Parametrics.
Okay.
Parametrics was hired by UDOT as the structural engineer on this. Uh, with what went on. Then that, and then the CE is for the. Inspection materials testing and that, and that number will be lower than what is shown there, but that is the budgeting number that we use.
Okay. Yeah, because that is.
Yes, that, that, that's, it's high.
Higher.
And so with that, uh, that's what we say, the, the numbers are actually gonna be closer to being flip-flopped. That, that the design is around two fifty and the CM is around two hundred. But I believe it'll come in lower than that when we get into, when we know what the final package is. Then we can quantify, uh, what testing has to be done and the number based of the new inspection. I believe those numbers are coming down later.
Personally, I, I think for ongoing maintenance, for all of those things, having it above ground is probably the better choice. Um, so I do like the design. Um, obviously, we'd have to check and and maybe. Put it off until we were, were able to review the budget and look at some of the financial ends of things and and make sure we come up with the money. But I, I like the design, I like the, I mentioned it, Ryan, a little earlier. You know, at first I was set on the underpass, but if you think of. Um, you know, what, what you've done with this and everything else and the safety that's built in, not to mention. I having to worry about people going underground and how to light that and maintain that, I think it's a, I think it's a good design.
I do have one question, if that's all right.
Yeah.
Heading west, you have it shaded quite a ways, is that? Part of the project? You see where it's shaded black all the way to the left there?
Yes.
Are we paying for pavement all the way to there in retaining wall, or is that just?
No, the, the estimate includes that being paid to them all the way in the estimate that we have here. If it's built.
Go ahead.
You're talking about the trail?
The trail itself, you know how it does an S shape right there? Do we need to go that far west, I guess? I'm just trying to think in my head where we can. Trim a little bit off the project, because on the Cottonwood Creek Phase Two, we could pave a section of that.
And and that could come out of this. With what we have in the estimate, what's shaded there. Is included in this cost estimate, so if we are able to shave that down. And build it with the other project, it would come out of this over.
Troy, I don't know if that's all inside here, but I was talking about this ten feet.
Your estimates, is it all the way to the shaded area right there?
Asking about like the, the tread up and.
About this right here.
You're talking about this section right here from here to here, correct?
Yes.
And what you're saying is maybe ten feet, but not the whole. Is that what you were saying?
That was my understanding.
I thought it went to right here. Can you see where I'm putting the?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought the project was gonna go to there.
Yeah, it's, it's, and estimates, and I'm gonna say, yeah, I, I thought it went all the way to the end because, I mean. I'm gonna say it this way, ten feet, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
That's the number that we have here. That included all of the block retaining wall was required to keep the trail up. Behind them and my building, and to tie back in there. And so with that, this three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Um, I'm comfortable we did include everything that's highlighted there. That we could reduce cost if we can get it to our. We only have to build to where your pointer is now, or even back further, Ryan, we can reduce this cost. On this project.
Yeah, from where I'm pointing right now, west, we got that covered, really, it's already graded and built, so.
Yeah, so this could be reduced to match to what's, to what is.
Fair to say?
Well, we, and we need to look at our budget anyway, right, so.
Yeah.
From that same spot going towards the road, is that gonna have to be a pretty significant grade?
We've got it to where it's about a five percent grade.
Can you scroll up and?
Yeah, let's, let's.
Okay, that's great.
See, it's right there.
Okay.
And so that's why we've extended as long as we have, so it's a five percent grade, so that it can be made in a wheelchair. Yeah, it, it is handicap compliant.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions for Troy?
No, I think it looks great, and I agree, I think it, looking at it, it looks like a good deal, like, we just gotta. Look at the numbers, maybe you can double check the.
Yeah, we'll better, we'll better.
Verify your part, if we can shave a little bit off there, that obviously will help us as well, but we have budgeted for. Phase two, part of Phase two, right, which is that part, so.
But what we wanted to do tonight is just bring it to you, give you the update, tell you how we've got to where we are, show you what we're looking at right here. Our next step on this will be to take this to the, uh, plan and hands like PSN review with UDOT. And at that point, these numbers will be more refined.
Yeah.
To where we can come back and know exactly what we're talking about budget-wise and everything. Uh, a little better than tonight, but here we're giving you our best guess after working with everybody for quite a while to get to this design.
All in all, I think it's, it's. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, not only staff, but the engineering firm, and, and I think we're on the right track, but yeah, I give out the numbers are fine, and then. Making sure we have money in the budget, and then we can make a final decision, hopefully sometime soon.
Yep, we should be, right now, based upon where we are and what we have, uh. I'm just gonna give you some rough timeframes here, Mayor, to give you an idea. To get from where we are now to where we have the, this PSN review. We're probably about a month to get to that. After that, then we will be. Two to three weeks making any revisions, corrections that need to go on. Then it'll go into a plan review and everything, and so we're looking three to four months down the road. For it to be ready to advertise, which, which at that point. We're close to your new budget here, so we may not, we should know by then where we're setting. Okay?
So construction would start when?
Or then construction could start on this, depending on when we get to there and and if. We need to wait for budget into July to do this, or we can move ahead, let's say it was July, the budget happened. Uh, construction start probably mid-August on it, and we completed this law.
Excellent.
You know, if we get, get started to where we could get it, we start in May or June. We'd be done probably by the time school started or thereabouts, so. We'll just come and, uh, we'll come and keep you updated.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are you here for wall support?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dustin, you're up for Capo Project Parks Rehooting.
Mayor, Council, thank you, good evening. Um, just wanted to provide a quick update on the Capo Project's parks rehooting. Project, um, due reallocated funds to the sports complex supplies. The rehooting project was completed on twelve twenty-three of twenty-four, with the final invoice amount being ten thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, which was under budget. By nineteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Yay, we like that. Uh, we have reallocated these funds as per last council meeting on twelve three of twenty-four. To needed supplies for the new sports complex, and so I wanted to provide a breakdown of exactly what the new sports complex supplies would be. And these were needs that we noticed, we've had three very big-sized tournaments, adult softball tournaments, um, since we've had the grand opening. And this is where these supplies are coming from. We just noticed that we need more cables up there. Um, the five existing cables that we do have up there, we'll utilize the whole tournament, everybody loves those tournaments, so. Um, we're looking to get five new tables, uh, new umbrellas, uh, eight new trashcans. Um, to put inside the dugouts, we don't have many trash recycles inside the dugouts. And then also a folding backstop padding protection, which will be installed behind home plate on the backstop to protect the fencing. Um, and it helps with the longevity, and it's something that's easy to install, and we'll actually take down. Help build on that as well, so, um, just provided kind of a breakdown of what that would cost. With all these supplies, we're looking at seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars in ninety-nine cents. Which is actually still over fifteen hundred dollars under the reallocated money, uh, the funding on that. Uh, any questions or concerns or thoughts?
Um, on the backstops, are you putting any, I know it's for the designer, are you just sticking with the?
You know, we had a, we had a committee on that sports complex, and I asked that committee, would we want to put a logo on that? And, and the consensus was kind of, let's not put a logo on it, just it.
Just curious.
Worried that it would fade in the sun, but if it's something that you would like, need to look into, it would cost a little bit more money.
No, I was just curious, because I saw the logos there.
Yeah.
At one point, you had talked about like a sponsor, putting their logo on it.
And that's something maybe we could do afterwards, like these were a lot of money, these folding, you know, backstop protection, we could. It's easy to replace if that's something, if somebody wanted to do, so.
Four by five, yeah.
Yeah, they're four foot tall, like twelve foot long, we're gonna have to use two of them per field, so that's where the eight total comes from.
What about the other older fields, do you need them for that as well?
We, we do, we have, already have some rubber, the really heavy rubber. We'll just leave them up there and they'll protect them as well, but it would definitely look better if we had this newer style of holding back stuff, so, so.
Well, and put that on your wishlist for next.
Absolutely.
I've got a big wishlist for all of that.
Manda's gonna say no to everything, because she'll be gone by then.
We'll talk.
So personally, I just, I, I appreciate the time and effort that you've put into dialing in exactly what it's going to be and. And I think you've done a good job with identifying the needs and keeping a number budget.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate you bringing up the, the previous, when we discussed it, even though it wasn't that long ago, just. Reminding us when we approved that and stuff, because you don't need anything tonight, you're just reporting, right? Because we already approved this, so you're just reporting, so, but I think it looks great.
And just for your information, you can look on that as well, uh, we're looking to do black color cables, the royal blue umbrellas, black trashcans. And the protection will be royal blue, because that will fit within our coverage that we have at the sports complex already, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin. Edwin, you're up.
I'm up.
Aquatic Center locker floor resurfacing.
All right, so, um, we've had the locker room floors of the aquatic center on the capital projects for, I think, two years here now, and we're finally able to lock this. Lock this in. Um, we've actually had it up to fifty thousand for the capital project for this one. Um, going through different options, what we could do to help with this floor, um. We found a couple of good options that will actually help really cut this even less than half of what we expected. we found a couple of good options that will actually help really cut this even less than half of what we expected here, so that will help big time on that cost too. To kind of give a little history on this, because I know there's some discrepancy on how many times this has ever been redone, wanted to clarify, so as everybody probably recalls, the pool was built in twenty sixteen, and that's when we opened for operation. The floor then was an ice skating rink. They, they put down what they called a shark grip into the top coat, which I later found out it's more of a residential type of use, is what the contractor, I guess, had on there first. We had a lot of different injuries and slips on it. So we got the same company to come back in twenty nineteen. That was the only time we've had this resurface, looking right specifically, all right? And at that point, we have them come by and they suggested putting another top coat and then putting like a silica sand on that top surface there. The issue that happened with that is the silica sand broke with all the traffic going across. So then it put an open gap between that top layer and the original layer. So then that crack just kept on chipping, and we have so much dirt and soil that's stuck between layers, and it looks atrocious right now. We've had a lot of different comments saying that the floors do need to have something done to them, and that's where I come in right now with these bids here. So with the proposal that I'd like to look into doing, each of the different companies, I got their suggestion to see what would be best. All of them agreed to diamond grind everything down to concrete to restart the whole thing, so they could get a new adherence with the new chemicals that they can put on, the new stuff. With that, then, they would be seeing about putting down essentially a lot of the same things. The biggest difference would be the top coat. A lot of places are going into with these epoxy coating, a top coat of an aluminum oxide, just little, little beads, really small compared to the silica sand, which would be a better slip resistance on that top coat. I did go through the company that I'm looking at, it would be the Quality Pro. We pull up the Quality Pro quote. So I did contact them, and they also provided numerous different locations that they've applied the same product down. They are actually the go-to company for all the Vasa gyms, usually it's around Vasa front. And a lot of them that's around their shower locations, you know where their actual lockers are. And their general contractor for these Vasa locations just said, I, I try other places to cut costs, and you know, keep on going right back to Quality Pro, because they do everything to the fine point, and they make sure it's done right, there's no cracks, everything follows through with what they need. We've never had issues. I even asked to see on the longevity of it, and a lot of the places, they've had some that are about eight, nine years, not even a bit of issue at all on it. I had that same general contractor, he went out to a site today, actually, to do a one-year follow-up, and with that, it still looks as if it's pristine and brand new after a year. So, a lot of good opportunity with this Quality Pro, and I'm coming asking to see if we could get an approval for that one, the twenty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-six out of Capo Project, to have that going forward, to lock it in. Any questions I could help you with?
What's the timeframe for doing it, in other words, how long?
Up and running within a week. They're saying about seven days, and I would lock that in with our cleaning week that we already have set. They already said that they have tentatively put us in for what we're wanting to do, our cleaning week in March, so we can have that locked, and one would even know that we've been closed longer than our normal operation closure.
Excellent, any other questions?
Will they like pull the benches in the locker rooms, and then you have to reinstall those, or would they run us there?
I think they would, assuming they'll pull it out, because they gotta grind everything down to concrete. That is my assumption on that there, so.
And go locker rooms to the pool entrance.
And the hallway, anything that has that speckled flake is gonna come up. That way we can make sure it looks uniform, otherwise it could be tacky depending on what flake is used. We wanna make sure it looks uniform across the area. We wanna make it look nice, when it come to water, we'll check.
Right.
And, and you said that you was already budgeted fifty thousand in capital?
Yes, correct.
So you're saving us?
More than half of that, so.
I appreciate your getting the three bids and putting the effort in, and also I really appreciate the due diligence to go, you know, contact people about it. I think that's important, that we, you know, verify that, you know, they do good work, and you've obviously done that with the quality, so I would say we move forward with the,
with the.
With the Quality Pro, isn't that the one?
Right.
That you recommend, the one that, I would move that we go forward with the one that Edwin recommends, which is Quality Pro.
Okay, we have a motion that we have to.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Yerich Allen Bader.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thanks Edwin.
Thank you.
Ryan, Capo Projects quarterly update.
Sad time already, huh?
Can we even get the? Well, just working the manager updates.
The manager updates. Exactly, okay.
Do you have any need for a closed session tonight?
No. I've learned very quickly how to tease one, because he will get you back. Okay, Capo Projects, it's been a little bit since I've done a report on that, I've decided to do a quarterly, so I have a little more information for you every time we do that. And we had a busy year this year, we had three grand openings, three and a half, I don't know what you'd call that pickleball thing, but anyway. We'll give it four. And so I'll go through the projects a little at a time, and I added, and a few of these projects are all but done, so this is probably the last time I'll report on them, but just kind of want to give you the final numbers. So the sports complex, we are almost at completion with that. I'm saying about a ninety-eight percent complete. There's still a few little things we're working on. It was estimated at three point five million, we came in a little over three point seven, and that was due to the, the changes and the upgrades that we did along the way, so. Not too bad for the size of project that we did, plus going through the winter on construction as well.
What's happening with the concrete that you wanted replaced?
The concrete's already been replaced, yep. And these numbers are with all that.
We got the plug in too.
Not, not this conduit and everything's in the center, but not.
Right, that, that's what I was.
If you go to the next slide. So this, real short, the things that will, so one of the things that Dustin will probably be bringing to you is the maintenance shed that we had to cut out of the project. So he'll probably be bringing that in next year on the Capo Projects. Signage, and then the backstops, and the things that Dustin said earlier that he's working on, so. Kind of the finishing touches, there's still the trees, I didn't put the trees on there. Are they planting them?
Yes, next spring, the Rotary Club has donated the trees, and they'll be helping us plant around the sports complex. We're gonna use about twenty trees on entryways.
Placing what's there, or just adding to what's?
No, just adding to the sports complex, mostly on the entryways of the CNF, and they're gonna be the honey wolfest trees.
These are just a few pictures I had along the way. I don't know if we ever need a journal of all the projects, I got plenty of pictures, so. Kind of a fun project, we were frustrated at times, but that's how you get things done, right? You gotta go through your own pains, so. So that project will be complete, I'm thinking, by the time we open it up for play, I guess.
That was having the sign.
Yeah, who took the sign down? I actually liked that picture better, because I had green grass, the other one gives us killing me, I didn't like it, so. Innovation Hub, I did not put a project cost estimate on here. I did not want to put a number in that wasn't really truly accurate, because we had so many numbers thrown at us, and we kind of went through a phase of designing and also inflation, so.
Can I just say, though, that the, the number up there is less than half of what it could have been? And the team worked really hard to get the number down and get this project done, and very reasonable.
One of our first bids was over a million.
Yeah, I remember it was over a million, and our grant wasn't near that much, so.
So, I think it doesn't show, but, yeah. This project, they did a really good job on.
Keep in mind, we still got the exterior, we do have some funding left for that for an ADA sidewalk and zero scape, so. From five thirty-five, that will go up a little bit.
Do you have any spaces in there rented yet?
We've got three that's moved in.
Awesome.
Possibly a couple more. And they've been moving in this week.
I noticed the lights on the big office on the left-hand side are on another blind zone, so I figured somebody took that one right off the pad.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the big ones we had to do an arm wrestling for. Yeah, the whole of the big ones are rented out. And we can keep going. Like I said, these are just a few of the finished product. The, the chairs that went in the center was actually delivered today. They look pretty good in there, so.
Did you get the water issue in the kitchen?
Yeah, the water issue's been fixed. It's funny how life throws you curveballs, we get everything done and spiffed it up, and then the water line underneath the building decides the leaks, so. We have pulled the whole water line out, and Danny did, and Bill did an awesome job at replacing that and finding that, so. And then the nature park, this project took a lot of hard work, but with the community involvement, this is the only way this was pulled off. It was estimated at one point two million, we did it for six forty-three. So almost six hundred and forty-five thousand, so a lot of that was because of our great community. I mean, they jipped in and the donations and, and that's kind of what I'm working on right now, is the donation sign and, and making sure they get recognition for what they did, so. Some of the things we're still doing though, the main entrance still needs attention far as a sign and possibly a gate and fencing right there. We've already overseeded, Dustin did a phenomenal job there, I don't know if you've been down there by the pavilion, but there's no weeds now, and it's like, what, an inch and a half of just fresh green, so.
Nice.
Yeah, tho- those aren't weeds, I think.
No, no.
It's a premium.
Premium, dude.
And then there is surveillance cameras, that's all done, and then we'll be doing some wayfinding. The wayfinding, we're gonna have the committee with the trail system kind of come up with it, because we want it to match all the way around town and, and have direction that way, so.
Is there something in the park that says to look for the carved animals?
No.
That might be a fun thing to add.
Yeah. Surprisingly, they're still out there and not flown away, so. But that's been a good thing for the kids, you may know about that stuff. And that was our grand opening there, and the water fountain has been installed and a good add to it, so.
Speaking of water fountain, you, you might get to the pickleball courts too.
I didn't put them on this one, but we have it ready.
Okay.
We've gotta dig through the park to get the water service.
It's not gonna come from the building, right?
Yeah, it's gotta come from the restroom in the park.
So it wasn't, there wasn't a, that old water fountain, there wasn't water?
Well, we should have thought ahead, I guess, and, and did it then, but now we put a big old pad of concrete, the basketball courts are covered, and it shut off the mystery, so. Had we known, we would have probably done it that way, but it was an old line anyway, so to have it new, it actually is a good thing. And then the gun range. We are starting to see a little bit of progress here. If you haven't been out there lately. So, so far we've spent fifty-three thousand, I know that sounds like a lot, but we, we've moved power line and we've got a lot done with the EA study too as well, but if you go out there, we do have the shelters being built, and they're all framed in, in fact, I think it's the next pitch, I don't know, that's the plans. Go to the next picture there. So on the bottom left, that's already constructed out there, and they're, they're nice, it's gonna be sweet, and so we're waiting for tan to shell them in. And so the two hundred yard range is all about built. We're about ready to open with the two hundred yard range, so. And that was done a lot with WCF and, and Roosevelt City as well, so. And just to update you on the EA study, I know that's a famous question at a council meeting. We did hear today that we are submitting for reimbursement on what we paid for it, so. We're getting closer to the grant money. I'm not promising, I'm just saying we're getting closer.
Hey, it's coming. It's gonna be, I'll have the final laugh when you got a million dollars free money in your bank.
We'll take it, Jeff, thank you.
So I do have a proposal. Maybe we'll get a thank you at that point.
I believe it, it's just funny, because we've been in this.
It's taken forever.
Yes.
It's like three or four years we've been, that carrot's been down with, and we've been hoping.
Getting tired of looking at the carrot?
Carrot, dude.
I believe that. It'll just be nice to finally have it, because then we'll, we'll be able to get that done quickly.
Yeah. I think Jones and the Mail ought to have a kill and grill at barbecue.
There's rabbits on there?
We got his hand to pick the kill in there, because.
No, not that close to the sewer farm, I'd rather bring it from your freezer. Okay, moving on, sorry. The Cottonwood Creek Trail Phase Two, we're finally getting going. I mean, it's probably a bad thing to have a litter with moisture and stuff, but it's a good thing if you're building trails, so. Danny's been out there cutting trail through the west side right now.
So up by one twenty.
Where's the golf?
Yeah, perfect.
Yep, so we'll be needing some fill here soon.
I have some.
I know, that's kind of why.
Really want to get rid of it. For free.
So, anyway, the cost estimate for this phase is one point three that you approved. I haven't, I didn't get the numbers from Ronda, because we haven't spent a whole lot right now so far, which is good. It's only been for drain pipe and, and cost for labor, so. A lot of it we've done in-house and, and we're getting there, so currently right now, we are, I'm waiting for bids for the bridges, bridge abutments, and almost ready to submit for.
There's two more, right? Two bridges?
Three.
So three?
Yeah. Yeah, there's three more. And so, anyway. We have completed all the stream alternation permits, so we're good to go there, and I need to give Zeke, and we'll start, I didn't tell him this, I'm putting him on the spot, but we will submit for another, I'll go right in your hand with those guys as well, so. And I feel pretty confident that we'll get it. They came out this summer and actually walked the trail and was pretty stoked, so. It's kind of fun to see those who give you the funding, that they come out and they actually see the benefit from it, yeah.
How much of that money, how much money have they given us?
We've gotten four grants so far, so two at one fifty, one at one eighty-nine, and one at two hundred.
So about seven hundred, six hundred and eighty.
Very supportive, yeah.
We love grants, don't we?
Which is about what we.
Yeah, yeah, just with that one, yep. Okay. The State Street pedestrian crossing, you already know everything on that, so don't need to jump into this too much, however, the next slide, I think I did some, all that's the plan. How come nobody asked what the yellow signs were?
I liked them, I thought they were cool. I wasn't about to bring it up.
I was almost disappointed.
I like them, are we actually gonna get those signs, because we need them?
Well, when we would meet, when we would meet, the, one of the big concerns was the, the speed on the road, and so that was my traffic calming, the one example was if you put stuff out there that they're not used to, people will slow down the look, and so if you put in a rhino crossing, people will slow down.
No, I thought they were, I'm hoping those are the actual signs, that's when I saw it, I thought, that's awesome, let's get those in.
Just put a zoo down there.
It's up to you guys.
When she brought that in, I'm like, we're taking this nature park to a hole in it. It's gonna be the best.
We'll have people there all over looking for the rhinos.
It's a party.
Safari.
Yeah.
Looks like Jumanji down there.
Yeah. Um, so I did take some before pictures, they're not very attractive, but, um, it just shows what we are doing, um, as a city, as a community. We're cleaning this gold shop and we're making a huge improvement, so. I mean, those look, I did not make any edits there, that's how it looks down there, it's a little scary, but. And the top right, um, shout out to Moon Lake Crew, they came in for a day and we took out a lot of trees and made it open so we can get in there, walk around, so the guys can survey and, so appreciate what they did for the city as well, so.
I will say that we do have, you mentioned it before, but we do have a great community that has really chipped in on every one of these projects, I think.
Yeah, it's been great. Um, these are the baskets, has anybody been out to the Teddy's Playground lately? I mean, you can go out there and play frisbee or whatever, frisbee golf. Um, I went out there just because I was curious to see how far they've gone and they put in all the baskets. However, be careful where the appropriate shoes, because there is a lot of cactus, so. So, anyway, don't go barefooted. But Preston's been busy out there, the, the pads, um, T-boxes, whatever you want to call them, are all completed there on the right and, um, and then they have done storage and, and fix up the parking lot as well, so.
Most of what they've done so far has been reimbursed, right, from donations?
Yeah, yeah. They did get a fifteen thousand dollar grant through that outdoor rec that we worked together on to apply, so that went over well. So now we're just waiting for the bike track or trail to come through. I bet Mike doesn't like me to say bike track, but.
No, he probably leaves you our time.
Yeah, so anyway, awesome project there and this was their service day when they put the, the pads together too as well, so. Again, thanks to the community, so. And that's all I have for the projects and we'll be adding more and getting more updates later. Um, if there's any questions or anything you guys have on, please reach out so I can address them and make sure we're on top of them. Anyway, thanks for having us. Now you want me to go to my?
City manager, please.
Okay. I don't want to tell you what Josh told me today, so anyway, he's done and out. Um, I only had two things. I want to take just two seconds here and, and shout out to Zeke and Sierra and appreciate them coming on board with us and welcome them being on with the team and they've kind of, I'm one, I'm thinking, they're thinking, holy cow, what did I just do? It's been a busy week as a city council and trying to get back in the groove after the holidays, but we appreciate them and their hard work and please be patient and we'll, we'll get you above water. Um, and then my last thing was just be mindful of the tenants moving in, Innovation Hub, so if anybody asks, we do still have three offices available for rent, so if there's anybody that you know or you get hit up, we, we still have.
Did we move the, some of the, you moved into there?
Yeah.
And what, what were the chambers?
Yeah, yeah, the chambers moved in over here.
Okay.
Um, last week as well, so.
Excellent.
There was a lot of desks being moved around through the holidays. Okay, and that's all I had.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Community reports, anything from the council for the night?
Well, I, I did see the financial paperwork, I did have a question on the.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, uh, I had a question on the Amqua Bank and the, uh, vehicles, which vehicles were, I just curious which vehicles?
It's the lease of the majority of our fleet.
Okay.
We have seven or eight vehicles still with, with Baycore.
Okay.
That we're going to release, renew for one more year and then next year we will be getting the entire fleet with one.
With, with Amqua with one?
Um, not necessarily, we're going to put it out for bid with.
Okay.
Multiple and, and see what comes up, so.
I, I just was curious, I, I know I'd seen that before, I just was trying to remember which vehicle, so I, I would move we approve the financials, mayor?
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman White, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that's unanimous. Um, if no community reports, no items for future discussion, I know other than the things that we talked about tonight, bring back to the council on the next meeting.
I move we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Anybody else want to, exciting by Council?
Did my?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.